Welcome, everybody, to the June 14th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, it looks like it is kind of a full house this morning. If there's additional chairs needed for folks that arrive, should be some out in the hall, or viewing can happen via the TVs out in the hallway or in the break rooms. So if that comes up, I might need some staff assistance in doing some of those items. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on July 6th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. in the morning. The Planning Commission will utilize the speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. So if you're neither the applicant or an agent for the applicant, yet you wish to speak on an item on the agenda this morning, I would ask that you fill one of those speaker request forms out at the back of the room, turn it in over here at the corner in this little box, and the staff will bring that to me and keep me organized during the meeting here. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with the roll call. I would just note that Kathy is gone, and Jim is on Zoom, and Gary is here from the Also note that, due to being on Zoom, we'll be using roll call for all the votes today. First item on the agenda is approval of the May 24th, 2021 minutes. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? I'm not seeing any, and I'm not hearing any. If none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the May 24th, 2021 minutes. Further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oop.
Right out of the chute there. Let's start this again. Roll call vote.
Yeah, Charlie.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Jim.
All right.
He's not sitting.
I had the five, Jim. We're good.
Out of mind.
Item number two, approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of items three through 10 in the consent agenda, and then regular items to be heard through item 25, followed by our standard end-of-meeting items 26 through 30. Are there any changes or edits to today's agenda? Hearing none and seeing none from the group, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor, or, excuse me, say aye, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Mawatter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 12-03, for Keith and Mary Ann Wheeler, to review a single line mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 12-03, with conditions. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 14-15, for Vincent Ryan Revocable Trust, to review two bunk houses on a small lodge on the subject property in an agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 14-15, with conditions. Item five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 17-23, for Cliff Dahl, to review existing structures on the subject property, including a pole-frame building in an agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 17-23, with conditions. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 18-18, for Randy Doughty and Laura Luthy, to review a rental home park on the subject property to include four existing mobile home rental units, and to allow an additional 10 rental units, which would include mobile homes and/or governor's homes, and to also allow caretakers' managers' residence and shop building in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 18-18, with conditions. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 19-11, for Paul and Rebecca Friedell, to review a guest house in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 19-11, with conditions. Item eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 20-07, for Black Hills Energy. Shannon Paul Miller is the agent, to review a temporary contractor's equipment storage garage in Highway Service District. The staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 20-07, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number nine is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 20-28, for Mystic Road Cottage, LLC, to review the transfer of a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. And staff recommends approval of the transfer of Conditional Use Permit, CU 20-28, with conditions. And finally, item 10 is Minor Plant, NPL 21-34, for Jessica Hessler, Seven Wonders, LLC. This is land serving as the agent, to combine three lots to create Lot 1, Revise, a Black One Forest Home Development and Dedicated Right-Away in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of Minor Plant, NPL 21-34, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No, not at this time.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Jim? Any items?
No.
Thank you. For those folks in the audience, today's consent agenda consists of items three through 10. We will vote on all of those items with one vote. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes that one of those items be heard, or would like to speak on one of those items? Noted that there are none. With that, staff recommends approval of today's consent agenda, items three through 10. Is there a motion?
So move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of consent agenda items three through 10. Further discussion? Noting none, hearing none. Roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved, item 11.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chutima Subud, Planning Department. Agenda item number 11. I would like to make a correction on the staff report. On page, actually, about the zoning district. So on page one, it stated that it's Ranchet Residential District. It's actually just Ranchet District. And then same thing on page three, criteria number six and number seven. The current zoning district should be Ranchet District. And criteria seven, which also should read Ranchet District. And on page four, under analysis, the site visit is actually performed on May 26th, 2021, in the staff report, it's May 27.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. This item is Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-29, to allow for a RV to be utilized as temporarily living quarters on the subject property for less than 180 days per calendar year. The applicants are James and Janice Beld, and they are in the Zoom meeting today, if you have any question for them. The location is south of Deerfield Road along Williams Draw Road. The subject property is 40 acres and Zone Ranchet District. Access is off of Williams Draw Road. There is no special flood hazard on the subject property. On the screen, this is a map of the proposed location of the RV. There are seven criterias for approving Conditional Use Permit. The criteria are on the screen, and I will read the staff finding. Criteria one, it appears that by allowing this Conditional Use Permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, especially considering the temporally nature of the applicant's request. Criteria two, the request that use is temporally in the nature, and therefore it should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this Conditional Use Permit should not affect the normal orderly improvement or orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the applicants are in the process to apply for an onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit and install a system on the property. They will dispose the waste from the RV at Mountain Meadow Store and Campground weekly until the system is approved and installed. The applicants also provided an email that they would utilize the campground's dump station with the campground's concurrence. Criteria five, access is off of Williams Draw Road. It should not significantly affect the traffic congestion because the subject property is mainly surrounded by the forest service lines. Criteria six, the current zoning is Ranchet District. The nature of the requested use is temporally. Temporally use is allowed in this district with an approved Conditional Use Permit, per Pennington County Zoning Order in Section 204C. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is Ranchet District. Allowing this Conditional Use Permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive The request was routed for comments. Emergency services have a concern regarding an address posting due to the location of the property and possibility of lacking of cell service in the area. Staff comment, this will be addressed as a conditions of approval. The county addressing coordinator is aware and will assign an address if this Conditional Use Permit is approved. No other major concerns or comments were received. On May 26th, 2021, staff performed a site visit and found the property is vacant of any structure. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, 21-29, with 10 conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Chutman, I still have problems with your condition number three about that an approved onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit be obtained prior to the installation of any onsite wastewater treatment on the property. I don't find that specific at all. In other words, I realize this is an allowable use, and I don't have any problems with the truthfulness of the applicant in saying that they're going to go to the dump station or whatever, but we don't have a situation here in our planning department that can follow up on that and make sure it's being done. And this is an ongoing thing, not going to be reviewed, but by the year. And I think we need to be more specific, that they either have to provide us with receipts, or they install the system, and then they start using it. We don't allow a situation where the use, and then down the road, we say, okay, when are you going to get your system?
Okay. As for condition number three, staff thinks that if this Conditional Use Permit is not approved, and the applicant or the property owner, the landowner, has to put in the system, I don't think that is fair. However, on condition numbers four, that say prior to an installation of onsite wastewater treatment system, and then it states that the wastewater from the RV be properly disposed of at all time, staff has a recommendation that the applicants provide the receipt of, you know, when they dump the waste. Would that satisfy with that?
I don't think they're going to be able to get a receipt. They're going to the campground. I'm sure it's a financial thing, where if somebody comes out and pumps it, it's going to be financially more restrictive than having to go and take care of it yourself. But on the other side, we still don't have any time category in this. Basically, it says, yes, they can apply for the permit, but when's it going to get installed? And this is 180-day use. This isn't like we're building a house, and we know that they're going to come down the road with that. And this is still an allowable use. I have no problem whatsoever with that. But I do think we need to be specific about the handling of the wastewater. And we're not very specific. You can throw number four in as well.
So what if condition number 10, instead of reviewing one year, and it will state that review in six months?
I think this has to go along with the Conditional Use Permit in the first place. They've got to have some recognized and recorded handling of septic, period. I think it's that simple. Right now, we don't have anything. They virtually could go on at least till the next review of it. We don't have a thing.
So you're suggesting that the owners be required to submit payment receipts for the handling of the wastewater?
Or, or, they go ahead and complete their permit request that you said they have going on right now, and get it done, get it installed before they put the trailer there, to be there.
I think with their email and the indication that they plan on taking it to the campground, it's not clear to me that they intend on putting in the onsite wastewater treatment system at this time. Rather, they intend to haul it. And I guess to your point, to confirm that they're doing what they say they're going to do, that would be then that they need to take it and get a receipt and provide that back to staff. That would be the close.
That'd be the very minimum, because I think when we approve these things, we approve them on the basis that we consider that our citizens are taking proper care of their septic. So we don't have somebody to go out and confirm that. So they're going to have to come back to us with it to show us that they are. It's a Conditional Use Permit.
So what condition are you suggesting?
I actually hate to see them, if they can financially use, whose was it? Some campground that's in the area? Is it?
It's Mountain Meadow Store and Campground.
See, they might have a situation there where they're not paying them. I think, I don't want to increase their costs, but eventually, if they're going to continue to do this, they need a septic on the location.
My memory.
Are they going to build someday?
My memory tells me that there's an email in the packet that says that it costs 20 bucks to dump at the campground.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the applicant is attending via the Zoom, if you have any question for them?
No, not really, as long, if they're providing a receipt, but I think we should limit the amount of time before. I mean, that shouldn't go on forever, if they're going to use it. Because again, we don't have the personnel that goes out and checks these things. We were asking the citizen to be honest and take care of it themselves, and at least provide us with some idea that they're doing it. That's what I'm asking.
So you're asking for an additional Conditional Use, or you're asking for an additional condition that indicates something along the lines that the owner provides receipts for handling of wastewater?
But I even think down the road that it should be reviewed, that eventually we get a wastewater treatment system in there. Are they planning now for one?
Yes.
They are planning now for one? Okay.
That's what they stated in the email.
At the one-year review, let's review whether it's in, or whether they have plans to put it in.
Okay.
I would live with that.
Go ahead.
Normally on these, they say that they want to live on the property while they're building their house. This one does not say that. Is that the intention?
The intention is to care of the livestock that they have on the property.
Sorry. Okay.
Further questions for staff on this item? Jim, do you have anything for staff?
No, but I do concur with Charlie's concern. And I think some modification of this would be appropriate to make certain that that goes in in a timely way, but I have no further questions.
Okay.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Staff would like to amend condition number three then to state that an approved onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit be obtained prior to the installation of an onsite wastewater treatment system on the property within one year.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? Then you don't, and I realize it's a bother for you to get the receipts. You're going to skip the receipts and just at least look at it again then in the year, Brittany? Because I can live with that, if that's what you're saying, because I know you don't have extra people to collect receipts either.
Sure. And when we go through the operating permit process, we require verification from the pumpers, that they either have a contract with them, and they maintain the dates in order to issue the operating permit. So there is a mechanism in place. I would suggest that in that condition number four, that prior to the installation, that we sort of be properly disposed of, and proof of pumping be provided at the department's request.
Just add a few words to that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I would agree with that. Both of them, three and four.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Mr. and Mrs. Beld, or you on Zoom, do you wish to add any comments to this before we vote?
Yeah, hello. We're the property owners, and we are in the process of getting a septic system put in. The perk test is going to be done on Tuesday. I don't know when the contractor can get it done, but it sounded like it would be within weeks.
So you're fine with the addition of the criteria to have it in within a year, as well as provide receipts? Okay.
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
Any further concerns?
One other concern I have is if we have, we have a family, and the reason we bought that property is because we really enjoy the Black Hills. And when our family comes out, there could be more than one camper there once in a while. Is that a problem?
This Conditional Use Permit is actually the request for a, just one RV on the property.
Normally, the septic systems are designed for a certain amount of loading, and so that's based on the number of people, whether it be in a house or multiple campers, those types of things. So would they need to come back in for an amendment to the Conditional Use to have more than one camper?
That will actually, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't be all the time. It's just occasionally when I got grandkids and stuff that like to come out and ride their motorcycles and four-wheelers and such out there, and my kids have campers, they like to pull them out there. And we did last year without realizing we needed this on over Labor Day weekend, and we all had a blast, and everybody wants to do it again. So I just would like to be able to do that, you know, for the grandkids.
So there's some specifics that go along with that, sir. The one would be is if they intend on tying into the same septic system that you're installing, and the results of the capacity of the system that you're installing based on the perk test. So the sizing of your system will dictate that, but also, right now, the Conditional Use Permit is only for one recreational vehicle, not multiple.
This is a situation where they're going to come in for the weekend, maybe a week at max, and leave. They would not be dumping there. They would pulling their trailers out and dumping at a public dump somewhere on their way home, not a permanent thing where they're going to take their camper and leave it there all summer long.
Okay. Is there any issues?
This needs to be amended. So the applicant needs to amend the Conditional Use Permit, and because that's the way that we advertise it, this is just specific for one RV. If the use is changed, the requested use is changed, it needs to be amended and readvertise it, and, you know, have a notice of hearing later to send out. So if other property owners in the area has any concern or comment, so they can, you know, voice their concern.
Sure. So in order to, what I'm hearing is, in order to add those items to this Conditional Use Permit, it would need to go back out and ultimately be delayed as far as voting today?
Yes.
Is that something you would like us to do?
No. We will apply for whatever we need to, so they can come out there by Labor Day, though. So we'll probably have to get another one.
No, you can amend this one. So it can be the same Conditional Use Permit, just have to amended it, and then we have to readvertise it. You don't have to have a new one, not necessary.
But, so we would continue this item today. You guys would go through the amendment process, and then it would come back in front of the board for review.
Mr. Chair.
The problem with that is that we have cattle out there, and the reason that we need the camper out there now is so that we can, so that we have a place to stay, so we can be out there while they're putting the septic in, and so that we can watch our cattle and take care of the farm things out there, and the other items that need to be done out there in the hills on that property. The property is a mess, frankly. So if we extend this another month, then that's another month that we can't do anything out there unless we're spending money to stay in the motels in Hill City, if we can get a place to stay in Hill City. So that was the reason that we needed a Conditional Use, was so we could put our RV on the property to stay in while we're working out there on the property. And it's not a full-time thing. We have a full-time residence in eastern South Dakota that we have to maintain as well. So, you know, we'll come out there for a week, come home for a week, go back for a week, you know, or however, we can work it out with our responsibilities in both places. So if we don't continue with the permit that we have, or the use permit that we have before you right now, that extends it out another month, that we have no place to stay while we're out there doing what we need to do.
Understood.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we allow people that have residence, and from time to time during, for proper use, we have people that allow campers dry camping on their site. In other words, where it's relatives, it's family members, that sort of things. They come and they go for a weekend, like these folks are talking, that don't hook up to the system. We don't put a D-N-E-R request there, correct?
If someone has a cabin in the hills and their relatives come with an RV, I'm not sure that we.
We've never gotten heartburn about it before. So my recommendation here is that we put a condition that says if they do have their family come with another RV, that it has to be a dry camping situation. Certainly, we would allow them water, you know, the water's not the question. The D-N-E-R, D-E-N-R is the question. So they can't. So they can't hook up to the system. So as long as one, one RV is hooked up to the system, we aren't going to have heartburn.
What I would suggest is that they just continue through this conditional use permit process and get a vote on it so that they can move forward with what they're doing and then work with staff on exactly what they want to do, whether the amendment is going to be necessary moving forward. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. In other words, you wouldn't recommend putting another thing on, another condition that says they can go ahead and have their family on a dry camping condition?
I believe that that would actually be an amendment to it. But I would say moving forward, just so they can move forward and get the things done that they need to get done, get a vote on this today and then work with staff on what that amendment is going to look like if it's necessary.
Can we help them avoid any additional charges over there?
The advertising is something that we have to, just because that's.
They would have to pay that and the notice?
Right. If it is required, like I said, working with staff to find out exactly what they're doing, times that they're doing it, if it's going to fall under.
But assuming it's this simple, then we could get by with those costs and, and not another application fee?
Right, they would at least have to pay the advertising fees.
Right.
Because they've already got the sign out there, so that wouldn't be another cost. But the notice and the.
Okay. In other words, we could at least limit their financial exposure to a, a, a minimum second round here.
Like I said, we can't waive the advertising and the, their requirements to notice. But I do think that working with staff to find out exactly what they're looking at and doing to see if it falls into an actual amendment or not would probably be appropriate moving forward. Since it's not something immediate that they have till Labor Day, till.
I'm just saying, I could live with it if it was just a condition as long as there was not two hookups to the septic.
Right, but when we advertise for conditional use as a temporary use, it's pretty specific. So when you notify the neighbors now, if you see 10 RVs, they could assume, you know, it's those, I don't know if there are going to be one out there, additional, is there five? I think that's something that we could work out with them, staff. And then if, if need be, come back to this.
I can understand your concern. Again, you don't have the personnel to go out and check every one of these things individually.
Yeah, most time it's complete basis only.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
And, and I don't have an answer to this, but I, I think it's absurd to require conditional use permits for people who have relatives come for the weekend. And I can't imagine that, that everyone who has, you know, a son and daughter, mother, father, whatever, pull up for two or three days even thinks about getting a conditional use permit. So I, I don't know the answer, but this just seems a, a bit
noted.
constrictive to me.
Further questions for staff on this item?
I, I would like to point out though, I, I'm in agreement with that except that Brittany feels that we've done something that would be in violation and would open us up to some liability. I think that we've got to add something to that.
I, I hear you, I don't have.
I, I kind of wish we could do what you're talking about too. Thank you.
Further questions on this item? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Along that line and not to belabor it, but if they had five teenagers, four or five teenagers that were at home and they accompanied them regularly on these visits to the property, we wouldn't, because they're not bringing an additional trailer or whatever, we would have no problem with that. But because these are, I assume, adult children and grandchildren, even though the numbers may be no different than a regular family, we're making a distinction here. And I realize that they referred to another camping unit. And so maybe that's the complication. But I have a certain sort of affinity for what Sandra said is that I, I don't want us to be splitting too many hairs here. And technically, maybe we're not, but it seems that this is a pretty modest impact on their, the arrangement that they're trying to affect here. So, and I'm not sure that I have a way that would satisfy Charlie's concerns, who is sticking to the letter of the law. But I find this rather frustrating that we're going to have to put these poor folks through a complicated and perhaps time-consuming process just to be able to accommodate their grandkids for a weekend or two. Anyway, so, as I say, I, I don't have, I don't have an answer, I'm afraid, but.
I suggest that I'm, I'm on board with staff's recommendation. Let's move this through so these people can get started with what they're doing. That will allow them and staff time to work through the details of whatever it is they want to do. And then they can come back in front of us if it's necessary from a permit standpoint. Any further comments on the item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just one. I do agree with, with Charlie and Jim on this. And as I read the language originally, I mean, it says only one recreational vehicle allowed to be utilized as a temporary living quarters. Campers for a weekend or a week are not temporary living quarters as far as I'm concerned. So I'm in agreement with, with him also.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd move that we go ahead and I make a motion to approve this one, hopefully so that we can get these folks into a position or the request as staff recommends so that we can get these folks in a position where they can use it and then review the additional request to see whether it would qualify without any additional.
Second. Motion and second for approval, just so I'm clear. That is with staff's recommendation on item number three to add the language within one year. And the language for number four, that indicated and proof of pumping be provided to, provided at staff's request, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
And the second as well? Okay. So motion and second, further discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Your, aye.
Motion carries, item 12.
On item 12, staff would like to correct on page, make a correction, I'm sorry, on page five and criteria six. So the current zoning district should read a low-density residential district. Just add the word dense, density in there. I misspelled it.
Got it, thanks.
Agenda item 12, conditional use permit CU 212130 to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicants are Thomas Boyes and Lynn Bear. They are also attending the, via the Zoom, via the audio today. So if you have any question for the applicants, the location of the subject property is 12061 Reno Gout Road. The property is 1.72 acres and zone low, low-density residential district. Access is off of Reno Gout Road and there is no spatial flood hazard on the property. There are seven criterias for approving conditional use permits. The criteria are on the screen and staff will read the findings. Criteria one, a vacation home rental takes place entirely within an existing residence and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, vacation home rentals are considered a residential use. Therefore, this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the vacation home rental utilized the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Reno Gout Road via an existing approach. Criteria six, the current zoning is low-density residential district. Vacation home rental are allowed with an approved conditional use permit in this zoning district. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district, which allows for single-family residents as a primary use. Vacation home rental are accessory use that is allowed through conditional use permit. The property consists of a single-family resident built in 1944 per Department of Eagleization records. No building permit is required. It has a valid operating permit. The request was routed for comments. No major concerns or comments were received. The applicant has complied with all of the application and submitting requirements as listed in Pennington Housing Zoning Ordinance Section 319E. June 2nd, 2021, staff performed a site visit and verified that the requested use meets the requirement of Section 319. Staff has not received any concern or complaint regarding the requested use for the subject property. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2130 with 16 conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this one?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Condition number four, I just think we should add what we had used. It's actually in the previous minutes on page six that the client shall, that the applicant shall provide the phone number and/or internet address to clients regarding the current day's fire condition as pertaining to the uses of the fire pit. I'm just concerned, I think we ought to do that with all of them when they want a fire pit. It gravely concerns me about people coming here from other areas and not having any idea of the fire danger that we exist within the hills.
I'm playing with your recommendation. Further questions for staff? Seeing none. It's my understanding the applicants are on Zoom call as well. Is there, is there anything that you, you folks would like to discuss?
Hi, this is Lynn Bear. No, we're in agreement with that regarding the fire pit. We really don't plan on having a fire pit there, portable or otherwise. Just because of the location, bordering the Black Hills, we do not want to take any responsibility of catching anything on fire. So there will be no outside fires. But we're okay to have that put in.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2130 with 16 conditions. And I would note that it's been discussed to update number four to the previous language that requires the owners to provide phone numbers and contact information to confirm current fire conditions and restrictions. Any further changes, modifications? If none, I would entertain a motion.
So move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Just one, I just wanted to point out again, and I know I'm a nitpicker for this, but for instance, the, the, the sales tax license has Sunrise Hills LLC. I hope you guys know who Sunrise Hills, I'm sure you do. But we take all these names and when we approve these things, we're approving that. And I just think we ought to have DBA stuff or something attached to some of these where, I think we get out on a limb sometimes when, when there's three or four names and, and I'm sure you guys run into problems with that too. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Hi, yes, this is Lynn again. It's the two of us that are on there and yeah, we are aware of that, like you said. And we can provide copies of the document if you need it.
Thank you for your comments. Last week we had, or the week before, we had one with four different names in the same application and, and didn't have anything to do with the application for the request was why I keep pointing this out. And that must be difficult for you as staff. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Uh, aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item thirteen.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item 13 is conditional use permit amendment CU 14-25. It is to amend an existing conditional use permit to increase the size of two existing storage units on the property from 40 by 100 to 40 by 184. The applicant and owner is Jeff Devaney. The access to the property is off of Highway 385 and there is a 100-year flood plan on the property. When approving conditional use permits, we look at the seven criteria that are up on the board. Number one, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental, detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, especially considering the storage units are currently on the property and the use has already been established. Number two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Currently, the property already has two storage units and the, the area has several other commercial properties. Number three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, access is off 385. Number five, the subject property has an approach off 385 and one off of Panula Gout Road. Number six, the property's owned highway service storage units aren't allowed with a conditional use permit. Number seven, the future land use of the subject property is highway service district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, there is two storage units that are 40 by 100. The applicant is requesting to add a 40 by 84 additions to both of the exist, to both of the existing structures. Currently, CU 1425 only allowed two structures to be no larger than a 50 by 100. That was in the conditions. So the additional square footage added to the structures required in a conditional use permit amendment. With that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 1425 with 11 conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this one? Go ahead, Charlie.
I assume that he's going to the north with the additions?
Correct, yes.
Because of the elevation difference on the south?
Correct, yes. And he, he does have a floodplain development permit for those, for the structures as well because there is some floodplain on the property to the south.
And then just one last condition. A long time ago, when that building was approved before it burned down, I thought that the only access to that area was going to be off of 16 and 385 there. But now they allow one off the other. I thought they didn't want any coming off of the, where the residential traffic was at.
This was routed around to Highway and Highway had no comments on that second approach off Panula.
Was it an approved one, did you say?
County Highway didn't say that it wasn't approved.
Okay.
So staff would, would assume that it's approved, but.
We'll leave it be. All right, thank you.
Further questions on this item? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-25 with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
So move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion? Noting none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item 14.
Item 14 is conditional use permit CU 21-31. It is to live in a recreational vehicle while building. It is to live in a recreational vehicle while building a single-family residence on the subject property. The applicant and landowner are Cynthia and Mark Van Vleek. Uh, she is in the audience if there's any questions. Uh, access is off Old Hill City Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. When approving conditional use permits, we look at the seven criteria that are on the board. Number one, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger, endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Especially, especially considering the temporary nature of the applicant's request. Number two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. But staff cannot predict the effect of property value in the neighborhood. Number three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding properties in the area, considering the temporary nature used to the applicant's request. This is not, this request is not intended to be a permanent use. Number four, access is off Old Hill City Road. The camper will utilize a porta potty until a septic can be installed. Number five, living in a camper while a residence is being built should not impact traffic congestion. Number six, the property is owned rural residential district. Living in an RV while constructing a residence is allowed with a conditional use permit. Number seven, the future land use of the subject property is suburban residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, the property is vacant. Uh, for a non-separate wastewater treatment system, a porta potty with a pumping and maintenance agreement. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns received. Uh, the applicant live in the RV while a residence is constructed. The applicant is working on a contract with a contractor to build the residence. The applicant has a contract with Southern Hills Toilet Service to have a porta potty on site. Staff has received several letters in opposition to the request. However, those letters state, um, based on covenants is that it shouldn't be allowed. The county does not enforce covenants. Uh, so staff is recommending approval with eleven conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item? What is the, um, duration? It's, I, I noticed in one of the, uh, opposition letters that got, uh, emailed that the, the request is that they would be required to start in, in, uh, May and be done by December, something like that. Do we have such specifics and has there been a building permit yet?
So a building permit has not been approved yet. Uh, within the conditions, it states that prior to the next review, which is in one year, that the applicant submitted a building permit.
Say that again?
So there, she has not, they have not applied for a building permit for the property. Uh, however, there should be a condition in there that states that, um, applicant apply for a building permit within one year prior to the next review.
And that's not currently in here?
Is that not a condition in there?
No. That's indicated by.
That's what I was, that's my confusion. I don't see the requirement for that.
That must have been admitted that it should be in there.
Oh, it says, oh, here it is. I, item number four. The applicant applies for a building permit for the residence prior to next review, which, and the review is within one year.
Is within one year, yes.
Has staff talked to the applicant, um, in regards to, uh, their timeline?
Uh, our ordinance enforcement officer has, um, and then talking with him, they're working with a contractor, but some, their contractor is, is pretty far out with, with building. So like, for sure timeline, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I assume, I believe that they plan on building as soon as they possibly can.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Go ahead. Karen?
One of the letters from a neighbor says that it's going on a year, that someone has been living there and as of today, no building has occurred on the property. Do we know if that's true? Has it been out there a year without a conditional use permit?
That I'm, I'm not aware of. I believe Dwayne, our ordinance enforcement officer, received a complaint, um, a couple of months ago about it and, uh, went out and spoke with the applicant and she submitted this conditional use permit. It would have been heard, um, last month, but there was some stuff with staff where, uh, it wasn't advertised in time. So it got pushed to this meeting.
I just have a, a quick comment. Who's going to monitor porta potty receipts?
She, the applicant has to submit them, like she, she'll have to bring them into the office and submit them.
I see. But who's gonna make sure she brings them in?
Uh, Dwayne, our ordinance enforcement officer is aware of this condition, um, and does work with the applicant.
I, I mean, I would think if you're using a porta potty and it needs servicing, you would service it no matter whether or not you guys requested it or not, but just a comment.
Further questions for staff? Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm more concerned about a precedent we're setting here. Per se, when we issue, uh, and, and the rules call for two years on a building permit with a one-year allowable extension. And if it takes another year before we're in a position where they can issue a building permit and in fact, we've authorized living in a recreational vehicle for three years plus an allowable one-year extension, four years. I'm not in agreement with that. That's not what this was set up or this conditional use permit use was set up for. If they could apply for a building permit, I have no problems approving this for use under even what makes me unhappy, and that's porta potty receipts, but that's fine. I can live with that in this case where they're building a place and, and they're going to end up putting their, uh, they're going to have to be able to, uh, put their services in for, to the septic anyway when they're building, so that's all. But I, I'm not in agreement with extending this out that long. And I believe one of the complaints refers to that too as well, is what you were saying. How long do they have to live? And they thought they, they thought we were being pretty generous, allowing until next May before they get a building permit.
Yeah, one of the comments says she, she is in violation of her covenants already, then starting to build next spring is being very gracious. She should have to break ground, uh, next May and finish by December twenty twenty-two. That's what the comment indicates.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would, I would suggest that we, uh, instead of having it reviewed in one year of reviewing in six months.
I agree with that.
That would, that would also change, uh, basically on number, uh, four also. That the applicant then would have to apply for building permit within that six months.
Further comments? Questions for staff? Okay. Uh, does the applicant wish to speak on this item?
Do you wish to speak?
You don't have to. If there's anything that you have questions on, for us, but you're not, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
Hi, my name is Cindy. Um, I'm working on trying to get a, the septic tank, uh, put in. He said it might. I'm sorry, I'm very sensitive. Uh, it should be put in probably. He'll start on it. I believe he was trying to tell me it will probably be about next month or two before we can get that going. And then he has somebody for, um, you know, for, you know, for him to start working on everything, then try to get my house built. Um, it just since COVID hit, I was, the last thing we put was a water well. And we never, the, the contractors never came back because everything went downhill and everything's already on backlog. So that's why I'm here, you know, to get this going. It's not that I didn't. I'm not trying to, you know, violate anything. I just didn't know anything about it since I thought that the land was already paid for and you have a problem with it. And now that I got slammed on with it, it's just, I wish somebody would came forward and told me something about this. I had no idea what it was, what it was going to cost.
To, to build a house or to install a septic tank or?
I'm sorry?
What, what did you not understand the cost of?
No, no, I'm just saying, you know, that, um, it just didn't come through because of the COVID, you know? And now that I'm getting everything lined up, it's just on backup, you know? That's my, that's why I put it for a year.
Do you intend on applying for a building permit in the next six months?
Right, I'm sorry, we're hearing aids on both ears.
Do you intend to apply for a building permit to build your house in the next six months?
I'm gonna, I'll try, but I'm, and I'm not, I'm not too sure where it's going to fall.
So, uh, I'm, I guess I, I would recommend that, um, that we move forward with this, but I, I think that you should, discuss this further with staff. So it's very clear, um, the requirements that, um, do you understand all of the conditions on the permit application that, that we're discussing today?
I think so.
Okay. All right. So there's some timeframes that go along with the items that got discussed today as well as building permits. Um, that I think it's very important that you understand the details on, not only for, um, the, the purposes of the building permits and the septic, uh, that, that we as the county, um, help with, but also the covenants that, uh, you'll be going, I, I guess that you'll need to discuss with your neighbors. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yes, question. Are you working with a contractor now currently? Any sort of contractor?
I have one going, I have his name and everything. He's the one that's going to, um, get the one, the person to do it. He's helping me do it all, so.
You have a contact, in other words, that must have some construction contacts.
Yes, I'm gonna, right now I have to do the septic tank first before I start getting the builder. It's lined up, it's just I don't know where I stand on it because of having the backlog on it. I'm just a newcomer to them, I guess. You know, and trying to get it going.
I'm concerned you're going to run into a lot of problems if you're using an intermediary to find contractors because right now most of the contractors are busy enough that they don't need additional undefined work or specified. Do you have some drawings of what you want to build?
Yeah, I got it.
You've got those?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I do.
Is anybody currently looking at giving you a, an estimate for that?
Morton builders.
Morton builders?
Yeah.
Okay.
Further questions? Okay.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'd be concerned about putting six months on this. I'd, I'd rather see us continue at the next meeting and have somebody sit down and go, go through and see what we do have and what we don't have. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same situation, six months around. Some of these builders are out six months. And if, uh, if you don't have them pinned down, in other words, if, if a builder's out six months and we don't have a date today, you're not going to have it.
Well, the, the requirement though is that she would have to apply for a building permit.
But the builder's the one that's going to apply for the permit in all reality. The builder's going to apply for the permit.
Not known, sorry, Cody Sack, environmental planner, uh, not always. The homeowner can apply for a building permit. If, if she has a floor plan and a site plan of what she's, uh, planning on building, she can apply for a building permit once she does her per, profile test for her septic.
Cody, having worked with Morton builders before, for instance, unless she leaves some items that she intends to do for herself in that building, Morton's going to apply for the permit.
They, so Morton-
Do it with a lump sum. That's how the contract's written. They're going to get, the permit's going to be in the contract. If they have items that they don't do and they become a contractor, a prime contractor under it, that's a different story. So what, that's what I'm saying, that could, that situation could go on if, if, if it's still, there's dollars and cents, there's contracts, there's limits as to who's going to do all these things. And somebody, I, I'm not sure you understand them all. The things that need to be done yet, services, utilities. I'm not sure you understand them all. And how far out they are.
Oh, he's already told me on that. He informed me on it. Um, the gentleman that's going to do it, the septic tank and who's going to be the, uh, the contractor and everything. Um, he said it would, it was going to be all lined up with a plumber and things like that, electrical and, you know? It would be in like, what you want to call like a package or whatever. I'm just saying that, but yeah.
One of those people that apparently had that understanding already walked away from the job. Is that correct? He didn't, you were already prepared to move on this and now we're starting over from scratch again. That's what I understood you to say, that you had a contractor lined up before.
I'll be upfront with you. I, we got a divorce. We did have builders, uh, contract. He let it go and now I am trying to pick it up with Morton builders and getting it going. I didn't think I have to stand here and tell you guys my personal problems.
I'm sorry for those. I'm just trying to say that I'm not sure we're in a situation where we should be putting six, six, an additional six months on this.
I understand, I understand what you're, you're saying. So a, a, as it is now, the conditions are, are listed here and, and we don't, man, we don't need to understand your, your personal problems, but, um, the concern from the board is, is specific to these items that are listed in, in the conditional use report. Um, and, and what, what it basically says is that the camper will be allowed to be utilized as temporary living quarters. And the intent is, is that it, that it's allowed on a temporary basis.
It's going to be gone in September.
It's going to be gone in September.
Yes, September first, it'll be out.
Well, but you, you won't have a house built by then, will you? The intent-
I have to find somewhere to stay.
Okay, so so at this point, you're, you're proposing that you would be there until September and then, and then it will go somewhere else because you, you-
No, uh, I'm try, I got someone that's going to start doing the septic thing. Okay, what do we call it? And then they're gonna, I'm gonna get the, the builder to come out and start telling me more or less when he can start. And then that's where I, I sold my home back home in Texas.
Okay.
I have the money to put down to start building.
Okay.
Going to get a loan to start doing all this.
Okay. So, um, Charlie, I'm sharing your view here. I, I think it would be appropriate if we, if we continue this item and allow staff to, um, have conversations. So the specific timeline of these things can be, uh, addressed and brought back forth.
I move we just continue to the next meeting?
Correct.
To try to nail it down a little tighter.
Anybody have concerns with that?
I'll second that.
Motion and, and second to continue to the next meeting. Is there further discussion? Do, do you understand that we're gonna, we're, we're proposing to, to continue this to the next meeting? So some of the details that are, that are not included that we can work through? So that the county staff can, can work directly with you and, and get answers to these items?
I guess.
Okay. Um,
Roll call?
I'm going to make sure there's no further questions because I, we haven't brought Jim into the mix here on this. Jim, do you have anything further?
Uh, no, I, I-
You're muted.
All right.
Um, I, um, I think absolutely we should, uh, continue this and I think it's in the best interest of all of us.
Yep.
Including the applicant. And I think she understands that.
Further discussion? Noting none, um, roll call vote.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, item fifteen.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item fifteen is conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash thirty-two. It is to allow a secondary slash accessory structure. The garage is a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant and owner is Dennis, Dennis Kamik. And the agent is fist land surveying, both are in the audience if there are any questions. When approving conditional use permits, we look at the seven criteria that are up on the screen. Number one, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permission, permit should not be detrimental or in danger of the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, especially considering, uh, I should say, especially considering that, uh, garages are in allowed use in a residential zoning district. Number two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The garages as an accessory use are in residential districts. Number three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in immediate vicinity. Uh, access is off Forest Road. Number five, the residential garage should not have an impact on traffic congestion. Number six, the property is owned rural residential district, the garage is a primary structure is allowed with a conditional use permit. And number seven, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district, allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, the property is vacant and there is no on-site wastewater treatment system. Uh, this was routed around for interdepartmental review, there were no major comments or concerns received. Uh, the applicants have applied for a variance to reduce a front yard setback from twenty-five feet to two feet, which will be heard at the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Adjustment Meeting. For the purposes of the conditional use permit, staff finds no significant issues and is recommending approval of conditional use permits CU twenty-one dash thirty-two with eight conditions.
Thank you, are there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Charlie.
I have my usual ones, Cody, I just, I always like to see the condition, something about cold storage or no utilities. Uh, whenever we do these, some people, uh, as soon as we're gone, you see heating going up, you see, uh, bathrooms getting built in them, but that's neither here nor there, I can live with your condition. Uh, do have some problems on that front yard setback at this point in time. I'm not sure why you would even, why anybody would even look at it, but is there a reason why a twenty-eight by twenty-eight would need a two-foot setback?
The, the property is very sloped in the back and that, the front, that front end right there is really the only buildable area.
This isn't the one with that pictures like that, but, uh, let's say it is. I guess, I can't, I can't tell what it is, but it didn't look that bad in the picture over here, but if, assuming it is, it's just a matter of you pour more concrete to lift the foundation. You know, so you got a flat floor and, and there is some fill, but it's, it's done in town, it's not anywhere else, you fill the floor.
Yeah. Um, I do know that, uh, for the variance, uh, staff is recommending denial of the variance, but this conditional use permit just allows them to have a garage on that property. Where they put it at will be up to the Board of Adjustment if they get the two feet. If they don't get the two feet, they'll have to readjust their site plan.
Yeah, the only reason I brought up, we don't use those old things where it does, that it's, if we approve this, we're not looking at proving everything else down the road. But, again, I just, I like to see whenever it's a structure ahead of time, I think it should be somewhere for, we put personal use, but, I mean, if they're gonna heat it, or if they're gonna add, uh, toilets to it, then I think they're, they're going beyond that building being there ahead of the other buildings, but other than that, I, I don't understand where the location of this is totally at, I can't tell by the roads and everything and, and these old, uh, I see a whole old Hill City Road, but I was out there and I just couldn't figure that one out.
So this is on, this is on Forest Road?
Yeah. It must be where I can't see it. It's out of line of sight, very easy from the Old Hill City Road, that's where I was trying to pick it up.
Further questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, looks like we have the agent for the applicant.
Good morning, my name's Janelle Fink, I'm with fiscal land surveying and I'm here on behalf of the Kamiks and they're here as well. Um, just to address your question, Charlie, this is just accessory, um, cold storage. The applicants live on Lot Four, their residence is on Lot Four and their primary garage is there, they're relocating here, um, permanently to the hills, this is their vacation home right now. And they're relocating and like many people, they have extra vehicles and toys and things like that. And that's what the accessory garage is for, and there is some significant rock on Lot Six. In fact, I'm not sure how this ever was plotted as an individual lot in the first place. There's very little area to put any kind of a structure at all on Lot Six. Um, and there is significant separation between the actual roadway where you're, the driving surface of the road, it's almost like thirty feet from the proposed garage location to the edge of the road. So, the setback is to the right of way, in this instance is a sixty-six foot wide right of way with approximately a twenty-foot driving surface that isn't particularly aligned in Forest Road. And the request for the variance goes to the Board of Commissioners and tomorrow to, to be discussed. So, I think, you know, we have some justifiable reasons for the location, um, on the lot. But as far as the conditional use permit, it would just be, um, that accessory structure and cold storage. There's no on-site waste disposal or anything like that proposed.
Further questions?
Yeah, Janelle.
Mm-hmm.
Did we get the right picture then? This doesn't look like it's thirty foot from the road.
But I'm not, th- this, okay, it's from the right of way, Charlie, this is the correct exhibit that shows the proposed location of the garage. But the right of way is sixty-six feet wide, the actual driving surface of the road is only about twenty feet wide. So, there's almost a thirty-foot separation between where the driving surface of the road is and where the proposed location of the garage is. And it's clearly marked out there, they've got rebar with flagging on it. And so, I don't know if staff has additional pictures or not, but it's very identifiable. They applied to the county for their approach permit, they received that, we've, we've gone through that process, so we're just working through the rest of the details.
Only reason I bring it up is we have a lot of places out in that particular area where the windrow from the snowplow on maintained roads is sitting right by the garage door or their front door.
And this is-
So, I didn't wanna see that happen again.
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna get crossways within the thirty feet, but it doesn't show it, I don't know, from my picture, I don't know where their garage is going and we don't have the same old, where I went out and got an opportunity to look at these sites and get, catch up on what you're saying. I did make an attempt in this and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's, it, it's very well marked and you mentioned Old Hill City Road, but again, this is off forty-four off of Forest Road. And it's very, they cleared some trees to improve the site visibility when they applied for their approach permit. They've got four tunnel rebar with ribbons marked on it where the proposed garage is. And again, there is significant separation, they're gonna be able to, if they needed to, to park a car in front of the garage before, that, without encroaching or, or backing onto the actual roadway, so.
Further questions on this one? Noting none, does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, uh, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one thirty-two with eight conditions, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Noting none, uh, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item sixteen.
Item sixteen is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash thirty-one. It's to combine lots to create fourteen R of Diamond Ranch subdivision. The applicant is Timothy Schwab. The access is off Happy Trails, there is a hundred-year flood plain on the property and the size of the property is ten point seven seven acres. Uh, currently as the property sits, there is a single-family residence, uh, studio with a bathroom and an on-site wastewater treatment system, all of which have the proper permits. Uh, tax ID five six 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 four is vacant, many structure. And there is no on-site wastewater treatment system, that's the property to the southeast. Uh, proposed lot will be Lot fourteen R and will contain all of the, uh, the structures that are, were currently listed above. This was routed around for interdepartmental review, there were no major comments or concerns received. And for the purposes of a layout plan, staff finds no significant issues with the requests as the request appears to be in harmony with surrounding properties. So staff is recommending approval of LPL twenty-one dash thirty-one with eleven conditions.
Thank you, are there questions for staff on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, um, staff recommends approval of layout plat LPL twenty-one thirty-one with eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
Someone's-
Sorry.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, item seventeen.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director, agenda item number seventeen is minor planned unit development amendment PU twenty-one dash zero eight. To reduce the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet for a future garage on the subject property. The applicant and landowners are Todd and Tina Warkanting. Lot size is two point zero two acres, currently planned unit development district. Uh, access is off Plaster Place Court and there is special flood hazard area on the subject property. Uh, as the property sits today, the applicants have drawn three building permits this year. One for a single-family residence, one for the proposed garage, and one for an on-site wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for an interdepartmental review and County Highway stated that they're typically opposed to front yard setback variances, but in this instance, the Highway Department does not oppose. And there were no other consider, or, no other concerns or objections noted. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has indicated the building envelope for the proposed garage is limited due to topography and excessive amount of fill would be required to level the subject property in order to meet the required twenty-five foot setback. Staff did verify through topographical maps and a site visit that, uh, there is about a forty-foot drop uh, going across the property, you can see that topographical map here on the screen. And I also have, uh, site photos where you can see that there is a drop going down to, uh, the property line from the road. Uh, with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area and staff recommends approval of minor planned unit development amendment twenty-one dash zero eight with conditions.
Thank you, questions for staff on this? No questions for staff, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, um, staff recommends approval of minor planned unit development amendment twenty-one dash zero eight with four conditions?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Noting none, uh, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item eighteen.
Agenda item number eighteen is layout plan twenty-one dash thirty to combine three lots in order to create Lot Seven R two of Forest View subdivision. The applicants and landowners are Edward and Tammy Davis. Location of the property is east of the intersection of Highway three eighty-five and Highway forty-four West. Proposed, uh, lot size is one point seven acres. Currently zoned suburban residential and rural residential districts. Access is off of Kinsley Drive and there is no special flood hazard area on the subject properties. As the, the three lots sit today, Lot Five is point three four acres and contains a detached garage. Lot Six is point four one acre and also contains a detached garage. And Lot Seven R is point nine five acre, contains a single-family residence, uh, tool shed as well as an on-site wastewater treatment system. Uh, proposed lot will contain all of those structures and will become one point seven acres. And the request was sent out for interdepartmental review, there were no objections or concerns received. So with that, staff recommends, uh, approval of layout plan twenty-one dash thirty with conditions.
Thank you, so when these lots are combined and there ends up being all these multiple structures and in this case, there's two single-family homes, is that right?
No, sir, there's one single-family residence and, uh,
Two detached garages.
Correct.
Okay, I thought I heard that slightly different. Um, and there's no living units in the detached garages, okay, so these are just accessory buildings then?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
No further questions. Questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting, noting none, um, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one thirty with nine conditions, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item nineteen.
Agenda item nineteen is preliminary plat twenty-one dash thirty-two to create Lot B of Guy Davis Homestead. The applicant and landowner is David Stone, his surveyor is Bros Engineering. Other affected landowners is, uh, Davis Homestead Reserve LLC. Site location is off of Willsey Road, is currently zoned agriculture district. Access is via unimproved section line and fifty-foot wide access easement. The Board of Commissioners did approve the layout plan twenty-one dash twenty-three on May eighteenth and the applicant has met all conditions of approval. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review and County Highway stated that any roads built along or within section lines shall be built to ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, no other can, no other concerns or objections were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that on May eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners approved subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash zero, zero seven to waive the requirement to provide percolation tests and soil profile hole information. Uh, as, also on that day, they approved subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash zero eight to waive the requirement to de, to dedicate and improve section line right of way. With that, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area and staff recommends approval of preliminary plat twenty-one dash thirty-two with conditions.
Thank you, questions on this one?
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Help me through, I can, I'm trying to put this lot into the, the sketch from Bros. And I, I'm getting lost.
Okay, so if you look on the screen, maybe this will help. Um, I've, I've highlighted on the right side of the screen under the proposed lot where that'll fit in, there are two separate lots that, uh, they're taking portions out of to create this one lot. So on the right-hand side of the screen is the proposed lot outlined in red. Does that help?
No, cuz where does that, I, I don't see where it fits in at. Uh, my eyeball is pick, not picking up where that matches.
So you see the property line?
Because the other one carries over and carries around the corner, I, that's where I'm getting lost.
Okay.
I'm looking at this one here, it says subject property and it goes all the way around to a square corner. And then all of a sudden, we've got this other straight one through here. I don't understand that.
So if you see this, this portion of the property, these property lines, those are the same property lines that are identified right here?
Correct.
Does that not help?
Well, but then look at the top edge, uh, on that same one and it goes around the corner to another flat spot. We haven't got a flat spot up there, you see why I didn't?
Right, so the, on the left, this is zoomed out quite a ways, cuz this is a large piece of property, so that detail may not show up in that picture.
Well, yeah, but it's the, it's the, oh. Still, I, I'm just saying it looks different to me than the, the Bros drawing.
So Lot B is taking a portion of government Lot Six, a portion of government Lot Four and a portion of the southeast quarter, the northwest quarter.
This one has one, but again, and then you see this, this one has a long one, little finger extends out and I don't see any finger extending out on that one. Do you see what I'm, I'm just saying, the whole thing doesn't look like the drawing? It looks like-
So once this plat is filed with the Register of Deeds, this is what equalization will draw this lot off of.
Okay. Can, do you understand what I'm saying? If we take the finger here on Bros drawing and we add this other property, it doesn't look to me like it goes into where we call it subject properties. It falls short of going into there. But it just looks different. Our sketch looks way different than their drawing to me if I was looking at it. I can't see where it fits.
The, the west line is the same, correct?
Correct.
The north line follows that finger, as you call it, for the, till it reaches the intersection, and then it continues up for another five hundred and forty seven point seven nine feet. And then it comes due south. And it splits government Lot four all the way down to the, the quarter line of the southeast quarter or the northwest quarter.
I miss it. I'm coming over. Show me, Rich. You look at these all day long. What I'm saying is I go by here, I go out right up there, then we've got the little piece comes over here.
Here's the lot right here.
Okay, I go with that.
There's the, here's the jog that you're looking at. You're trying to identify. Take this and rotate it there.
Well, yeah, now I know why because I'm, but I said I was looking at this whole thing and it doesn't fit in that old sketch.
It's zoomed out.
I mean, we get pretty remote from this stuff. I'm sorry, sometimes we need some help. We're a long way from going out there regular. You're talking about this much of that sketch.
Right, it's a large piece of property.
That I can live with.
Right.
But giving me a sketch, I'm sorry, and I, I did sleep on the pillow wrong. I told you that earlier, Jason. But that, I'm lost when I see a sketch like that. Thank you.
We're good? All right. Where, now where was I? Staff recommends approval of preliminary plat PL twenty one thirty two with five conditions. Is there further discussion?
I think it's, it's just air conditioning, I think.
Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move to approve.
I second.
Motion and second for approval for your discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item twenty.
Agenda item number twenty is Preliminary Plat twenty one dash thirty three to subdivide one lot and create four lots. The applicant and landowner is Betty Johnson. Her agent and surveyor is DC Scott. Current size of the parcel as it sits today is fourteen point one four acres, currently zoned rural residential district. Access to all proposed lots is via Deegan Drive, and there's no special flood hazard area on the subject properties or proposed lots. Board of Commissioners approved Layout Plan twenty one dash thirteen on April twentieth, twenty twenty one, and they have met all but two of those conditions moving forward. As the property sits, there is a single wide mobile home that is not habitable that is on the property, placed in nineteen eighty seven, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system that has not been verified by the Planning and Zoning Office. Proposed lots are on the screen on the right. Lot one A will be three point four two acres, Lot B will, or one B will be three point four three acres. Lot one C will be three acres. And Lot one D will be four point three two acres that contain the single wide mobile home and onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. No comments or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is working with a local septic pumper to identify the specifics of the existing onsite wastewater treatment system on proposed Lot one D and to obtain an operating permit through the Planning and Zoning Office. The applicant has also stated she plans to provide percolation testing soil profile informations for proposed Lot one A, one B, and one C. And with that, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of preliminary plat twenty one thirty three with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, Jason, did you, did you say there's a non-habitable mobile home on that lot?
Sir, it was placed back in the eighties. I don't think anybody has ever resided there. She's, the applicant did say that there is an onsite wastewater treatment system there, but it hasn't been used in about that amount of time, so it needs to be verified and serviced and permitted through our office.
Thank you. That was, that was going to be my follow-up question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there plans to remove that?
She has not indicated any plans to remove it.
Okay. It's on staff's radar to get taken care of though.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Further questions for staff on this item? Noting none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of preliminary plat twenty one dash, excuse me, preliminary plat PL twenty one dash thirty three with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
So move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item twenty one.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Molliter. Item twenty one is Conditional Use Permit CU twenty one dash twenty eight to allow an accessory structure, a pole barn as a primary structure on the subject property. The property size is ten point four nine acres. It is zoned agriculture. Access to the property is an undeveloped portion of section line right of way along one hundred and fifty third Avenue to the south. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. When looking at conditional use permits, we use seven criteria. The, the criteria are up on the screen. I will just read the findings. A pole barn should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. A pole barn is an agricultural use, and thus should not change the use of the property, and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Utilities are not required for a pole barn. Access to the property will be provided via an approach off of one hundred and fifty third Avenue. The section line right of way will have to be improved. Access to that property will be provided in approach off of one fifty third. The current zoning is agriculture district. A pole barn before a primary structure is allowed in the district with a conditional use permit. When forty acres is not the parcel size and zone, or, excuse me, tax agriculture. The future land use of the property is agriculture district, which allows for single-family residences as a primary use. Pole barns are a secondary use that is allowed through a conditional use permit. This was rather round to the interdepartmental review process. There were no items of concern that came back, with the exception of County Highway wanted to see that an approach permit was obtained, and then emergency services wanted the property to be addressed. Staff finds no significant issue with this request and is recommending approval with conditions.
I have some questions. Is this the one where they need to improve the section line road in order to get access?
Yeah, this is the, the road that comes into it currently.
Is that a requirement of the, is that a condition?
Yes.
All right, where did I miss it?
I see it. Oh, number one.
Okay. Thank you. And the, the landowner is aware of the standards required?
Correct, and if, or they could obtain a variance waiving those requirements. But any improvement to the section line, whether it means ordinance fourteen or not, does require road construction and a section line right of way permit application.
Okay, thank you. Further questions for staff?
You knew I'd have something, right? And I'll just put it out there. I'm still believer, and, and the reason I'm a believer, I can take you to several of these that just abuse the heck out of it, but a cold storage building only, no utilities, I think should be included in the, like, number six. And the reason being, I can take you to these on any holiday weekend, I can take you to several of them, surrounded by RVs, people, and they've already put their bathroom inside the place. They've got different conditions than what's we pass as a cold storage or a unit, and there's no other house on the property. They're, they're coming from wherever and put their RVs around it and UTVs and everything else. If we don't specifically, at least we have some meat in there that they're violating it. But when we just have a, we leave it open and it's personal use only. Well, personal use only was having the relatives and the neighbors come with seven RVs, you know? I'm just saying, I can show you these. They exist up in the hills. Thank you.
I have some notes to talk about that later on in the meeting.
Thank you.
Further questions?
You're not going to slap my hand for bringing it up?
I am not, but we are going to come to a resolution for us and staff and everyone else, or at least come up with a plan to get to a resolution. Further questions?
The applicants are in the audience. If you have questions for them also.
Okay. Do you folks wish to address anything, or do you have any questions for us? Sir, please. Well, it's okay. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Consider this section line road. It says improvement. What do they consider improvement?
So tho- those are required per, it looks like ordinance fourteen, and so staff should be able to get you a copy of those? And then, sir, what was your name again?
Vern Green.
Vern Green. Okay, thank you. So one of the conditions is, is that the section line be improved to ordinance fourteen standards or a variance waiving the requirement be obtained prior to issuance of a building permit? So I'll need to have you review those standards with staff.
Another question I have is, is the road has been built up to about where your picture starts there. But the county doesn't maintain it. They don't braid it, they don't plow the snow, they don't grovel it, they do absolutely nothing with it. But yet they want us to build a road that meets our specs in there. If we have to build a road in there, don't they have to maintain it?
That's a larger question. The, whether, whether the county maintains certain roads or, or not. And I know that I don't know enough about the answer to that question to give you an answer on that.
Okay.
Would the Department of Transportation?
Get with the county to see what kind of a road we have to build in there.
Yes, sir.
It said in the paperwork about a variance. How do we apply for a variance? Do we do that here, or do we go to the?
You would do that here, and you would work with the planning staff here.
All that's out there is just a piece of grass. We just want to put a small pole barn on there to put our equipment in. We probably don't go out there four or five times a year. So if I can get a variance on this road, it isn't something that's going to get used every day. We don't live there.
I understand.
Costs a lot of money to put that road in to use four or five times a year.
I understand.
You see what I'm saying?
I do.
So we can apply for a variance here?
Yes, you'll, you'll work with planning, the planning department upstairs.
Okay.
The same folks that you worked with for the conditional use.
All right. So are you going to approve so we can put a building out there?
Well, I can't speak for all of these folks, but I have no issues with what you guys are planning on doing.
Okay.
They get to vote for themselves.
I understand that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Green, before you leave, I'm going to be honest with you. You're not going to be tickled to death with what you're going to have to build for a road.
I don't hear.
You're not going to be tickled to death with what you have to build for a road under this without a variance. Don't leave without talking to Brittany about the variance before you get your building started, please. Because I don't want to mislead you and have you drive home and come back a month later. The, section fourteen requirements are, are considerable. And you mentioned about the county and maintenance. They're in a situation where they're not taking on any additional roads with, by any request. I think you've only approved one in the last few years, haven't you, Gary? Yeah.
I agree.
And that was an emergency type of situation, if I remember reading right.
I, I don't remember the circumstance.
Yeah, it was just one, and so you're not going, I doubt whether they're going to just re- remove that moratorium on taking on additional maintenance roads, so you can count on you're on your own. So I just wanted to tell you that because I'm the picky one up here a lot of times, but I wanted to tell you, this is a tough one for you, section fourteen.
I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Carl?
Great. Further comments, questions? Brittany's coming up. Okay. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty one dash twenty eight with eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item twenty two.
Item twenty two is Telecommunications Facilities Permit TC twenty one dash zero two to allow a hundred and eighty foot self-supporting public safety radio tower and equipment shelter on the subject property in a highway service district. This property consists of one point five acres. It's on highway service district. The current land use is a volunteer fire department. The access to this property is off Forty Seventh Avenue North, and there is no special flood hazard area on this property. Typically for a telecommunications tower under a hundred and ninety nine feet, it's an administrative review. However, that agriculture property to the north, because it doesn't consist of a total of forty acres, it's thirty seven acres and some change because of the right of way that was dedicated out of it, it does require this telecommunications facilities permit to be approved by this commission. So I will go through the criteria, and I have put the criteria on the board. Public safety tower is a benefit to emergency services in the area. A public safety tower will provide additional radio coverage for the area unless assist emergency service providers. Allowing this telecommunications facility permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Utilities currently exist on the property to serve the fire station. Access to the property will be via an approach off of Forty Seventh Avenue West. There will be little traffic generated due to this use. The current zoning is highway service district. A telecommunications tower less than a hundred and ninety nine feet when five hundred foot setback to a residential district is not met requires this telecommunications facility permit. Additional criteria, this support structure is located within an industrial or commercial district. The support structure is located at least five hundred feet from a residential zoning, including agriculture less than forty acres. The support structure will not meet the setback requirements of property lines, so it will require a setback variance. I have contacted the Department of Transportation. They don't have any setback requirements for cell towers to their right of ways. The structure will be engineered and constructed to accommodate a minimum three providers. And there is another tower within one mile of the structure. However, there's no more utility on that tower. That tower is essentially I guess for lack of better terms. But staff doesn't find any issues with this request and is recommending approval with nine conditions. And Ted Ruffel from the Pennington County nine one one is on Zoom if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this?
Brittany?
Yes.
This whole thing, I read a lot of, and I'll just read what I asked myself in the very first page. It said, every tower private approved in Pennington County during my previous exposure to the towers. And it's been pretty long. I was, I was on the commission before we ever had a tower ordinance, a separate tower ordinance, and I've kind of watched it. And we put a tower ordinance in place, by the way, because of unhappiness with our citizens over towers. Had approval based upon allowing emergency services the right to operate off of it. Everyone, everyone had that as a condition that I ever saw. Why the need for this tower? That's what I asked myself. Now, I read this entire thing, and, and you know I spend a lot of time reading these things. And they looked at one, there's actually three towers within a short distance of this. One of them probably knew enough it didn't get included in their look, and that's the one over by Reptile Gardens on the side of the hill over by John Brockelby's old place. There's a newer one over there. But then you've got the one sitting right by where they're at with what, five hundred feet, maybe? Thousand feet? And then we've got the one at Baker. And then we've got the one at Baker. And Baker, all year long, they brought in cranes from outside to update stuff and equipment and whatnot. And some of the reasons they used in this when they reviewed it, and, and I'm still not talking about where budget came from. I know, I guess, I'm going to stay out of budget. I think Gary's got to look at why the budget, but it came from the state. It still becomes taxpayers and people like us deciding whether there should be a tower there. And I, I'm just questioning in my mind, why were, why some financial review of each one of the ones close wasn't made? Is, was there a financial review made? You know, to see whether this is a good thing or a bad thing? I realized what it came off of. It came, probably came from the monument problem recently within the last year over at, at Mount Rushmore and, and the services. And I understood also, I, I was checked, I know this came not from county money. Gary has a understanding, it came from state, a state stipend or something. Which is still taxpayer dollars. But why do, I'm asking myself, why do I want to vote for this tower? Even though I know it's a good thing for the county. Why do I want to, when, if you say there's no services available? That's a relatively short tower right there that's loaded, that you said, right, within the five hundred or a thousand feet? Is it Verizon's? Is that the one referred to in the report?
I believe so. Ted, do you have any comments on how you guys came about with this location?
Ted, are you on? Ted, can you unmute? And speak to the location?
I can go on while you're trying to get him. Does anybody else feel that way? I mean, if you knew that every tower has the rights to have these all sorts of emergency services. We didn't specify just whose, whether it was counties or states or federal. Any emergency services could walk up to one of these applications that we approved for this county, and they could join up and get on it. And now we're talking about putting one there. Well, that one's going to help one area. Are eventually, we're going to have a fleet of these? The county's going to maintain and take care? What are we going to do? I don't know. I, I'm just worried about extending myself out and, and being a good citizen and serving on here and voting for something that's needed. Certainly it's funded. I'll go along with that.
As I understood this, there's two coverage maps that was provided in the packet. You got that one there.
That's the current.
And then you add this tower, or you add this tower, and you add the tower by Hill City, and that's the intent, and that's the estimated coverage, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and so, and the one by Rockerville.
Let me get to that one, would you? Okay. Thank you.
And so the intent is to increase the coverage area of the emergency services communication. This isn't for other communication centers, correct? This is a Pennington County Communication Tower?
Yes. That's my understanding. It's a radio tower for our communications. It's part of a bigger project that nine-one-one is doing throughout the Hills area with getting service providers and service area.
Okay.
Do you know why I would, why I shrugged? I don't have nine-one-one at my place. How many years have we been waiting for nine-one-one? And this isn't going to provide it. They're going to have to come up and provide another zone, and then we're going to have another round of this. If we're actually going to move to have this be a nine-one-one.
This is Ted Ruffel. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Ted, we can hear you now. Hold on just a second.
I apologize. I, I'm, I'm quite a ways away, and I was having some cell coverage problems, but I'm on now.
All right, hold tight. Go ahead, Charlie.
If this is just the start of a larger issue nine-one-one, I'm all for it. But if we're talking about a one-time thing to make our governor happy, then I'm not for it. Do you understand why I'm coming, the difference to me? I don't have nine-one-one. I have five bridges that, on our road district road, anybody could dip over and get in the creek. I'm going to have to take care of them. I'm going to have to find a phone to get on. That isn't of concern. And it hasn't been concerned. I believe we're, we're at least ten to fifteen years behind the original government guideline for nine-one-one in Hills. And nobody's going to move because of it, but that doesn't make them happy or safe. And we're going to do it for one here. And we're going to give twenty-five thousand dollars. So there's funding involved. And there's a lot of people, and, and a certain number of people just flat don't like towers. We know that. You know that, Brittany. You went through the whole thing. So this thing does concern me much more than it, it would appear on the surface. But.
Mr. Chair, Ted Ruffel, can I, I, I listened to, I heard most of the concerns early on. I just missed about a, a minute of the call. I would be happy to address the commissioner's comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ted Ruffel, Jr., Pennington County nine-one-one. I am the project manager on this. This is not a cellular tower. There's no cellular service that'll be on this initially. This is a public safety radio tower. This is part of a four-tower site. For about twenty, twenty-five years, we have been trying to solve public safety radio coverage problems in the Keystone, Hill City, and Rockerville area to include the area around the Black Hills Children's Home. Pennington County has tried lots of less expensive, less effective solutions over the years, none of which have worked adequately or sufficiently to provide. And, and when I say public safety radio, these, this is the portable radios and mobile radios that our deputies, firefighters, and paramedics use to communicate with dispatch. And and, and the commissioner is right. Last July third, the events that took place at the base of Mount Rushmore, we had been asking for funding and assistance with this problem for many years, trying to improve coverage in Keystone and Hill City. Unfortunately, just due to their geographic location, the other public safety radio towers around the hills just will not cover those areas. And, and we've known for twenty-five years, the only way to solve those problems was to put a tower in strategic locations around that area so that our, you know, public safety professionals would have coverage. The reason that tower there is critical. Motorola is the company that provides equipment, and they did the topographical and the coverage studies, and that, that Rockerville Fire Station location is absolutely ideal. It fills in a lot of the dead spaces around Rockerville, Children's Home, Hart Ranch. So that's why that is an ideal location. That's also going to be what we call the prime site. That'll be the site that links those other sites back to here where the master site is. So the Keystone Tower that we'll be building, the Hill City Tower that we'll be building, and then an existing tower up on Seth Bullock by Pactola Lake, those three towers will link to this Rockerville one, and it'll provide a four-site coverage of that central Pennington County Black Hills area. And as far as the other cell sites in the area, the one nearby, back towards Bear Country is full. There's no room on the ground for our equipment, then there's no room on the tower for the kind of equipment that we use. We use very different antennas from cellular service, and so our only option was to put up our own tower there. And and yes, there is some local funding on this, and then the legislature and the governor. The governor worked hard to get us some funding as well, because she was there at Mount Rushmore July third and witnessed the problems we had communicating. And I think that kind of convinced, you know, the folks at the state level that we needed some assistance with this. So I hope I've answered the questions, and again, I apologize for the, for the problem I had earlier.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair, can I go ahead and finish my question while Ted's on?
Go, go ahead, Charlie.
You mentioned that three more towers. Are, are they built yet? Is this something that we're going to see yet come through the system?
They are not built yet. The Keystone Tower, that will, that goes through the town of Keystone's process. That tower will be built at the same time this one in Rockerville will. And then the Hill City Tower, again, the city of Hill City, we'll go through their process on that one. It also, we, will be built at the same time as this one at Rockerville. The tower that's up at Seth Bullock above Pactola, the old fire lookout tower, that's an existing site, and there'll just be a little bit of work we have to do there. One other reason that Rockerville site is so key is we have a sightline to Seth. So we can use microwave connectivity there to connect Seth to Rockerville site, and that helps reduce our cost as well. We don't have to pay for a monthly, you know, a, a circuit for that. That, that'll be a microwave link.
Okay. Then my next question, and I read your, your report that, that was included in our packet about the no tower space and no ground. Did they look at bake, the one at Baker's location? The Baker Timber?
The problem, we did look at it, sir. The problem is, is that our antennas will not mount on those kind of, those monopoles, those flagpole-style antennas. The flagpole-style antennas, all of the cellular antennas, or a lot of them are inside, and they don't have the kind of mounting surfaces. Our antennas are about twenty-two feet long, and they're very heavy. And we need to be able to anchor them on two, two points, and they have standoff arms that hold the antenna out away from the tower. So for the type of radio, you know, the statewide radio system that we're building out here to provide better coverage, we have to have the kind of tower that we're putting up there at Rockerville to support it.
Okay, then I guess, I've been involved in this tower thing for a long time. Long time ago, I was on the planning commission and before that, and we didn't even have a tower thing. You wouldn't even have to apply for this, and I guess, years ago. But we apparently were sure living in the dark if we were adding as a condition. You're, and I'm sure you're aware of that, that any type of emergency services, we included conditions that would have allowed anything from the county or the state through, the state through the county to get on these. And obviously, we've spun our wheels here somewhat, because that tower you're talking about at Baker's, they worked on that all year long. And I would think they had special cranes in here to work on that all year long. And if that's not the type of tower that will work for our equipment, I, I think somebody's got to sit down and start knowing these things. Because everybody in the Hills isn't happy about a tower, whether it's for nine-one-one or otherwise. And, and I just got to say that, because I've got people that talk to me about approving these things. Ted, I mean, did you look, do, do they look at anything? I mean, can you give me one piece that you went out somewhere else and you looked at the financial repercussions of doing this, or this, or this on this? Or are we just taking a shotgun effect?
Oh, no. I can tell you, I was, I've been around for about thirty-two years doing this as well, and I was part of the group that helped to get those conditions on those early cell towers. But if you remember, sir, the early towers that were built, the early cell towers were, were the lattice-type towers where you could hang just about any kind of antenna on them. Due to public concerns and the visual impact over the years, that's why the cellular providers have went to more pole-style towers. And so that's good. The other, the other good news I have is that most of our agreements with our landowners contemplate that these towers we're putting up will come down one day. And the reason is, is that the public safety radio system will, as the technology advances, we will not need our own equipment and towers. We will be able to work off the cellular system. We, our radios will work off five G or six G or seven G as this technology rolls out. And that's all being worked on. So the good news is a lot of these towers that we have had to put up for public safety reasons over the years, you know, it'll be, it'll, it'll be long past my final days, but I don't think any of our agreements go out more than fifty to a hundred years. And because we know that probably fifty to a hundred years from now, these towers won't be needed, or we won't need as many of them. And so, you know, we're, we're sensitive to the fact that this is another tower, and nobody likes towers, but the day is coming when we can start seeing some of these towers come down. But we got to wait for the technology to, to catch up.
I agree with you, Ted, but then it, I'm going to throw in with you, though, it's going to be, I figure it's going to be past my time before. I have nine-one-one where I live. If you heard the conversation, we have five bridges crossing a little mile and a half road, and anybody could run off of one of those bridges at any time, and we're going to take care of the problem first up there to try to get help via landline, which they haven't changed in fifty years. They're finally bringing a new one up there right now. But it's still, and, and you, you actually make me feel a little bit better if we're going to, to be able to get by with improvements from the private sector, is what you're saying, on accommodating the equipment needs that you folks have. And maybe it's because you all work together finally.
Absolutely.
It's sad that it's going to take that long. It's sad that it's going to take that long coming down the road.
To be honest with you, it's, it's going to take that long here. You might have seen some big trucks driving around town. There's one parked out on West Chicago right now. It has FirstNet on the side of it.
Yes.
FirstNet. And the public safety and the wireless industry have been working together a long time. And so as always, this technology advances in the metropolitan areas first, and it slowly works its way into the middle of the country. We're already seeing the big, big metropolitan areas on both coasts are, have already made large-scale switches over to five G service. And it will get here, but our problem is we're in the middle of the country and, you know, AT&amp;T is here building out the FirstNet network as quick as they can, but it's a time-consuming process and costly. SDN is running fiber all over everywhere. Try, you know, you've got to have fiber connections to make this all work. And so the infrastructure is actively being worked on as we speak. It will get here, but it's not going to happen, you know, it's not going to happen in the next ten or twenty years. It might. You know, if, if the government keeps throwing money at it, and the industry, and the technology keeps advancing, it might get here sooner than that, but I think it's still going to be a while. But these towers, like we've got up today, the one, you know, these ones we're putting up today, this is probably the last round of towers that'll get built anywhere. I mean, it's, we're coming to the end of life on those systems, and, and eventually we will be able to switch over to cellular.
Ted, I, I've gone as far as going down to the state about this very badly that we're talking about right now. I've written them letters. I've been down to the state. And what you're talking about, about nine-one-one service and the, the fact, most of them forget, and they look the other way. We're paying five to seven taxes on each one, on every one of our phone bills, our, our wireless phone bills and our other phone bills for this technology to have gotten here, and we've been paying those taxes for fifteen, twenty years so that it gets here, and it's still not here, and nobody ever wants to talk about when it's going to get here, including PUC. So I want you to have your services. I'm just saying, this is a heck of a thing to come forward to, to taxpayers that, that, that fund these things eventually. I, I'm just sorry. I think somebody else, I, AT&amp;T, whoever, they're doing a great job of, of providing and improving those things in Rapid City and Sioux Falls. They're not doing squat for me up ten miles north and west Hill City. Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none. Staff's recommendation is for approval of telecommunications facility permit TC twenty-one dash zero-two with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
So move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Carrie.
Aye.
Motion carries item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash thirty-five to create lots one through twenty-one of block seven, and lots eight through sixteen of block eight, and lots nine through seventeen of block nine of Sunset Ranch subdivision. This is an existing subdivision, and this will be the remaining build-out of this subdivision. Those are approximately thirty-nine lots. Currently, there's about three hundred and eighty-three point four-two acres. It's in a planned unit development. Access to these properties will be off of Gateway Drive and two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth Street. I did review the criteria with this. The property is zoned correctly. It's part of the planned unit development. This will be the remaining build-out of this subdivision at Sunset Ranch. That planned unit development was a Uh, that planned unit development was approved uh, by the Board of Commissioners under Planned Unit Development oh-eight-ten. Uh, this request was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. There was just one item of concern that came back from county highway. They had some concerns regarding improvements to two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth street. Um, and they also had concerns on the site distances and wanted some reconfiguration of the lot lines so they align with the section line right-ofways. Um, so with that, staff does believe that this request appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and the land use in the area and is recommending approval with twenty-six conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item? Noting none. Um, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one thirty-five with twenty-six conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? No further discussion noted. Um, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Yes.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item twenty-four.
Item twenty-four is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash ten, Pennington County to amend section four-hundred non-conforming building structures and uses of land to amend and supersede the existing section four-hundred non-conforming building structures and uses of land of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, this was, uh, the, the purpose of this ordinance amendment was to update the effective date from February first nineteen ninety-four to February twenty-fourth twenty-twenty-one. However, uh, legal counsel would like to take some additional time to review this and is recommending to continue this to the June twenty-eighth twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
No problem. Is there a motion for continuance?
So moved.
Uh, so Gary was first, you're second. Motion and second for the discussion to continue. Item twenty-four to what meeting?
The June twenty-eighth twenty-twenty-one.
June twenty-eighth, so note that Jerry. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item twenty-five.
Item twenty-five is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash eleven for Pennington County to repeal section five-oh-two, Planning and Zoning Director, to repeal existing five-oh-two Planning and Zoning Director. Section five-oh-three, Pennington County Planning and Zoning Commission. Section five-oh-four, Pennington County Zoning Board of Adjustment. And section five-oh-five, Pennington County Board of Commissioners. Uh, the reason for this uh, request is portions of these sections conflict with state statute regarding appeal process and are defined in other areas of the zoning ordinance and the, in the definition section. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash eleven.
I read through this and I thought, all of this just needs to be stricken? Is that right? Is that what you're telling me?
That is correct. That is a recommendation from our legal counsel because some of these conflict with other portions of our ordinances.
We're good back there? Yes? Okay. I just looked at this and thought, we're sure we're striking a lot of words somebody thought was important back in the day. Go ahead Charlie.
Thanks for, I, I appreciate your new design of helping us through these things a little bit with the lines and the red and everything. But I went so fast that I skipped the, the meat of the thing. I kept going back through all these lines. I'm going, my God, there's nothing left. So I appreciate what you're doing and, and I understand this. Is it our, their intent to replace parts or any of it in the future, or is it all covered well enough?
Um, they will be covered in the individual sections because variances and conditional uses, they all have separate um, connotations and the legislature changes those from time to time. And then our ordinance would have to change, so we're trying to make that. So we don't.
I'm assuming then you would put those revisions in those specific sections then?
Correct. And right now in those specific, we just um, refer to the state statute. So if the statute changes, our ordinance doesn't have to change every time.
Thank you.
Here's my last hard question. Is the sequence of the elimination and the creation of various things, um, the way that you guys want it? So from the county's perspective, we're covered to answer any questions that these things that are being removed would, would entail? Does that make sense? Are we, are we going to leave ourselves without coverage in the process?
The only section that we haven't gone through yet is five-oh-nine, which is variances. Um, so that one will be amended. We've done the rezones. We've done the conditional uses. So we've done a majority of them. Uh, the only one we have left is five-oh-nine.
Okay, go ahead, Colin.
Colin McNeese, State's Attorney's Office. Uh, Mr. Chair, the sections that are getting repealed today or are proposed to be repealed today have redundancies, like Brittany said. So they're covered in different sections. Also, some of it's covered in statutes. Uh, and then as she mentioned, one of the sections, I think it's five-oh-four, talks about an appellate process uh, that's not allowed anymore. It says that appeals from the Planning Commission are gonna go to the County Commission. The County Commission doesn't act as an appellate body. So taking these out, I think makes uh, our ordinance better, more in harmony with state law.
All right. I trust you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Further questions on this? Hearing none, uh, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one dash eleven. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, um, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Motion carries, item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the May twenty-fourth twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. One item to note is that preliminary plat- twenty-one dash seventeen for Keith Lau to create lots five R and five B of Lau subdivision was continued to the June first BOC meeting and was approved.
Thank you, um.
Can I make a?
Go ahead Charlie.
Just quick, uh, on that particular item since the rezone's gonna come before us. Uh, I guess I'd like whoever's in charge of it to know, I'm gonna look at how much of it's blacked out by, by uh, setbacks and because I think there's the sectional angle so that that's fifty-eight feet alone going right along that sliver of property. Since we were passed it on with no recommendation, that's, I just wanted to let whoever the planner know right up front, that's what I'm gonna look at. How many, what's the setbacks? There's utilities that go through there? I believe there's a an overhead? Thank you.
Anything else on the county board report?
No.
Okay. Item twenty-seven, items from the public. No items, no folks from the public in the audience. Um, items from staff, building permit report.
Um, and then can I approach? Cause actually that one that I gave you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess the biggest thing to note, um, obviously our single-family homes are up significantly um, from twenty-twenty-one. Um, we had more single-family residents building permits in May than we had year-to-date in two thousand twenty. Um, so I think our, building is continuing to be significant in the community. Our overall building permits are about double what they were at this time last year.
What, you guys produce profit down there now?
Hmm?
Pro- produce a profit down there for the county or?
Um, actually we've, I think, almost hit our revenue goals for the year already.
That's what I would think. Thank you.
Uh huh, so.
You're more than twice the revenue from last year in, in valuation.
Correct. So when we look at our revenue, when we submit our budget every year, we look at what we're gonna approximately take in from building permits. And I think we're pretty close to meeting our revenue goals for the entire year already.
But from a value, yeah, so from valuation standpoint, you're almost triple what all of last year was.
Mm-hmm.
And we're halfway through.
Mm-hmm.
Questions on that? Okay, uh, items from the membership. Oh.
One more?
Scratch that, we're still on item twenty-eight.
Yeah, apologies. So I just wanted to let the Planning Commission know that this is gonna be my last meeting. Megan Kruger is gonna take over for me. She's been diligently reading all the fun cases and treatises and our ordinance and the statutes. Uh, you can tell how excited she is. She's really looking forward to it and I'll let her speak to that, but I just wanna let uh, the Planning Commission and the planning staff know that I've really enjoyed my time and I've learned so much and getting to know everyone has been a real treat. So thank you.
Thank you Colin.
I got appointed as the magistrate judge up in Aberdeen.
Oh wow. Good for you.
Thank you. I'm really excited, terrified all at the same times.
I don't ever use this, do you?
Very kind.
Anyway, go ahead Megan.
Megan Kruger. Um, I'm excited to work with everybody and get to know everybody and really get into everything and continue revising our ordinances to get everything in line with state statute. Um, and get everything as workable and easy for the public to use as we possibly can make it, so.
You're welcome.
Nice to meet everybody.
Any questions?
Good luck bud.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Item twenty-nine, items from the membership. I have several items noted. Open it up.
I know, thank you.
So what my, I guess maybe, maybe it would be, I think we should do it this way. You guys, and you tell me what you think. Um, my, what I would like is, uh, there's several items that have come up reoccurring in the meetings, Charlie, that um, there's some items where people have sales tax identification questions. Um, and then if there's recommendations on, on items that, that we, we don't have. Um, and I think they all, I'm trying to think about them globally here and what, what I'm, what I'm hearing from a very big picture standpoint is, is that what items do we approve? And we trust the people that come in front of this board that they're going to do what they say they're going to do as neighbors in Pennington County. We trust that they do those things. But more times than not, maybe the county has to go back and, and we have ordinance enforcement issues. And it sounds like you, um, you correct me if I'm wrong Charlie, if I'm hearing you, not, if I'm not hearing you correctly, but though, you're asking, we should be putting those requirements in there and putting the, the onus on, on the, the people that wanna do these things and not require staff to check on them in a year because after, uh, in a year, the, the buses left town and, and they're already off to the races doing whatever it is they're doing that may not be in line with what the, with, with what the conditional use permit approved. Am I, am I, from a big picture, am I understanding all of that?
Just, the only thing you're missing is I, I also have a propensity to believe that if we have the capability of doing it right the first time, let's do it right the first time, not come back.
Completely agree with that.
Okay.
Um, but there, in general, there's a lot of these items that we approve, um, with stipulations. And then they go set forth and, and we assume that people are going to follow those stipulations and sometimes they don't. And most of the times these come back as ordinance enforcement items. There's a lot of permits. Twenty percent? Is that a good guess that come forth from ordinance uh, uh, enforcement? Is that a ten to twenty? But what I would, what, what I would like to do is, um, if you have a list of things, Charlie, that, that you have, um, that, that are always things that you're looking at that um, maybe we can introduce as standardized condit- conditions, those types of things. If you have a list of specifics.
I probably do along the way. There's two or three of them I brought up today. One of them is certainly on the fire. I think we need to include instructions on the vacation home rentals, uh, any of the ones that are gonna do fire pits. It's that simple. Um, today I spoke, um, to ordinance about one I saw, visualized. It certainly wouldn't come up on a conditional use permit and that was spraying down eight UTVs. Uh, washing down UTVs. There's one outfit up in my area right now. They are renting, there's more than a hundred UTVs sitting there to be rent in the, in Stone Face's uh, place. And I drove by, what a weekend, and they're washing all these things down every day. And you know where, how far the stream's away? Seventy-five feet, me, maybe. Well, that wouldn't be allowable any other place. They're spraying these things down. So some of them are catch things, but some of them are, I, I'm thinking of another one is the cold storage building. If these folks, if they just wanna put a building on there and, and exercise their rights as property owners, I agree with that. But then, don't come back. As I said, I can drive you to locations where they do come back and it's surrounded by RVs on holidays or whatever. And they've already installed utilities and everything else.
My goal would be that we would come up with a list of these things. We could introduce them and discuss with staff about making them standardized um, conditions that go along with these items. So you don't feel obligated to catch every single one on every single item and then uh, we discuss it either, and either add it or not add it on the specifics.
It'd help shorten up the meeting too.
I just wanna make.
I don't like to hear myself talk, but I can't. If I spend four or five hours reading this and I make the notes, I feel obligated. And I feel obligated, you'd be amazed how many people I'm sure call you for things.
I don't get, for some reason I don't get called. Maybe folks don't like me.
I do.
But, um, but I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to, you to feel like we have to continually uh, do the same thing over and over and over again. That, that, those are the, those are the things that I'm trying to uh, uh, improve in the process here. As, as a big picture.
I agree, but I'm not sure I could make it an all-encompassing list, is all I'm trying to say.
Nope, nope, we're gonna take it a bite at a time.
Do the best I could and tell you some things that are habitual that I see. Uh, that's the best I could do and and actually I feel for you guys. You sit here and have to listen to me when I get nitpicky. Today was a bad one. I did sleep on the pillow wrong.
My shortlist as it exists right now is sales tax identification.
Yeah.
Fire pits.
DBA stuff.
Fire pits, cold storage buildings. So there's three. We'll, we'll start there. Any other items from the membership? Item thirty, adjournment. Is there a motion?
Who moved? Second.
With a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, uh, roll call vote.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks everybody.
Yep, thank you.